Fourteen is the Police Headquarters Complex Preliminary Site Layout Concepts Update. And while the manager's getting ready to step up to the plate.
I'm just going to leave you.
Oh. You have staff ready for that. Okay, we have, and let me say, we have one, two, three, four, five, six persons that have signed up to speak on this item. So we're here first from the staff.
Good evening, Mayor Baal, Mayor Protem Coleman-Fadon, Members of Council, Gina Proits, Assistant Director of General Services Department. Our team is here tonight to follow up on any additional questions or discussion concerning the Police Headquarters project since our presentation at work session on August twentieth. We've provided additional information in your supplemental agenda packet arising out of our work session. Further, as requested at work session, we've solicited additional feedback from the Durham Area Designers, Preservation Durham, and Downtown Durham, Inc., regarding the five concepts we presented on August twentieth. Our team has met with the Durham Area Designers and Preservation Durham. We have shared an alternative site concept diagram and a pro-con matrix that they have provided. Subsequently, the Durham Area Designers and Preservation Durham provided a revised matrix with additional criteria, and that has been submitted as well. Those materials have been shared directly with you, along with a letter from DDI. We do not have a formal presentation, but we're here to answer any questions, and I'll invite Deputy City Manager Bo Ferguson to provide any other comments.
Thank you, Gina. Mayor, Members of Council, I'm Bo Ferguson, Deputy City Manager for Operations. Just briefly, wanted to follow up on a meeting we did have with Durham Area Designers and Historic Preservation Durham last week to provide just brief reactions to a design schematic that they presented that's in your packets. We summarized our comments in the follow-up agenda items that you received over the weekend. I think the first thing we would want to stress is that we haven't done a detailed analysis. It's a design schematic. It's not something that our architects have had a chance to really dig into. So it's, the reactions that we provided to you, and as we shared with Durham Area Designers and Preservation Durham when we met with them, are, to a certain extent, off-the-cuff reactions. They're not the results of a detailed analysis. The discussion we had, and I know they're here to represent themselves this evening, but I hope I would represent them fairly, to say that their design is one that primarily achieves the goal of maximizing the potential for private redevelopment on the site. And it is not one that we developed on our own because we approached this project with the objective of primarily building from the ground up for the program of the Police Department and 911 Headquarters. And we also, in the Council's decision to select this site, pursued a goal of having a presence on Main Street. And so our primary concern about the schematic that's presented is that it does eliminate any presence on Main Street for the Police Headquarters and 911. And we felt like that was a design objective. So that was some analysis that we captured for the Council in the memorandum. Secondly, I think, you know, there was a general concern that it pushes all of the uses associated with the Police Headquarters, kind of squeezes them mid-block. It does achieve many of the purported designed objectives that we discussed at the eight-twenty work session, but does so in a way that we feel we haven't adequately been able to analyze how well, how it may impact the site in terms of the program. Those are general reactions. Again, that's not a detailed analysis. I believe that the Durham Area Designers and Preservation Durham would agree that one of the objectives that their proposal was designed to meet was to maximize private development. And so I don't think we disagree on that analysis. It also, obviously, does maintain the Carpenter Building for private use, which is not a, an option that the staff had presented where we showed options for maintaining the Carpenter Building. We did so as part of the Police Headquarters. So, wanted to just summarize that analysis, both for those in attendance tonight and to recap what we provided to Council. And with that, the design team is here, the staff team is here to answer any questions you may have. Thank you.
Let me first ask whether questions that the staff has, the Council has of staff, and recognize Councilman Brown.
Yes. Thank you, Bo. Can you, before we get started on this, can, for those in attendance as well as those at home, can you give us a general idea of where these proposals rank vis-à-vis the budget that was originally proposed?
None of the five proposals that we showed on the twentieth are consistent with the original project budget that was in the CIP. Designs four and five are consistent with the revised budget that was discussed at length on the twentieth. Designs one through three would require an additional 3.8 million on top of the revised budget due to the renovation and reuse of the Carpenter Building.
Okay. Again, for those at home, can you go back and give us the original budget proposal, and then how much, of course, this is determined by the proposal that we will accept, but how much that has changed?
The original project budget was approximately 62 million, which included, you know, land acquisition, construction, design, soft costs, everything associated with delivering the project. As we went through on the August twentieth work session, we have updated our cost estimates, and our new revised budget to deliver the program as originally developed is approximately 80 million dollars. Therefore, we identified some potential program reductions in order to reduce that difference. About 9.6 million dollars' worth of reductions.
Councilman Brown, is it your last question? Okay, recognize the Mayor Protem.
Maybe I should ask this question later. I grew up in Durham, and I remember the Carpenter Building. And I'm trying to think back about what it did for the community, especially during the civil rights era. Just trying to find out what is really the importance of it. I know there's no architectural value for keeping it there, but I just need some help trying to come to grips with why we want to preserve it when, like, a mile and a half away, a whole group of buildings were destroyed. And now we're talking so much about preserving this, this, this building. And I'm talking about urban renewal now. So if somebody could just share with me the importance of this and the history of Durham as it relates to what happened to actually black-owned businesses, and now we're trying to keep a building that has no value, and that will be even more costly to the project. Please, help me. Do you know anybody that can?
Mayor Protem, I'll just offer the-
Oh, you want to hear that?
No, what I want, I think you answered a very appropriate question, but unless the staff's prepared to respond to that, we have people that have signed up to speak that may want to respond to it, unless somebody on the council is responding. Staff, okay. That being the case, then, let's see if there are any more questions by members of the Council or the staff. If not, I'll go to the audience for persons who have signed up to speak on this particular item. Recognize Councilman Davis.
One question, I guess, we mentioned from staff that we weren't prepared to discuss the most recent proposal. Is there any estimate as to when there might be an analysis that you would make that would be presented to the Council?
I think we're comfortable standing by our opinions that we've shared. I think what, if Council directed that that was a preferred scheme, we'd ask the design team to do an analysis. I don't think it would be more than a few weeks, but I don't know that we're, some of the objections that we brought tonight are observations that I think would carry through that final analysis. What that would do would be more of a feasibility test, to make sure that the design as presented could in fact meet the programmatic requirements.
Any other questions? If not, we proceed to the persons who've signed up to speak on this item. I'm going to initially ask if you would hold your comments to three minutes. Of course, if questions come from the Council, that's not a part of your time. We have Victor Peterson, Minister Rafi Sahidi, Ellen Cassely, Wendy Hills, David Arneson, and Leslie Frost, in that order. So if you proceed to the podium to the right, as I've called your name, again, state your name and address, and the clock is ahead of you. First speaker is Victor Peterson. Let me just make one little comment. When I call persons' names, I call them as they've written them on the card. That's why I don't say miss or mister, something like, if you say miss, I'll put miss on there. If you don't, I call you by your name. Victor Peterson.
Thank you, City Council members, and thank you, Mr. Mayor, Victoria Peterson. I live here in Durham. I just want to just share, 80 million dollars is just too much money, folks. It is just too much money. And Mr. Brown, and Mr. Davis, and maybe the attorney could help me with this. I thought when we dealt with the Bull Stadium, I mean, with the stadium, the people voted on it. When we did the Durham Bull Stadium, I would like to know from Mr. Baker, and maybe he can get up with me later on, I would like to know why isn't the citizens voting, voting on this issue? Several, maybe several years ago, I came to this Council pleading and begging you to address the crime problem in this community. The crime problem is just off the hook. I would like to see some monies used to get a handle and develop some good programs in this community to get the crime out. Where I live, I live in walking distance from North Carolina Central University. And folks, we've had shootings over there. We had a shooting on my street the other week of Mr. Mayor. We've had someone come onto our property stealing Councilman Corey McFadden and Mr. Davis. I'm not trying to embarrass my people, and when I say my people, the African-American community, but we are in a crisis in this community with crime. And this problem could have been very easily taken care of years ago, when, when many of us came down to this Council pleading and begging you to seriously address the problem. And how we address the problem, we keep building larger police buildings, hiring more police officers. The crime continues to go up. We had police officers here Saturday. A person was shot down in this community because they were having a mental health issue on Saturday. That's the second African-American young man shot down by our law enforcement. What a sad, sad state, and what we're doing in this community to our young black men who are in crisis. And Mr. Bonfield, and Mr. Mayor, and the police chief, this woman here, me, I'm sharing with you, I'm very disappointed in all three of you, because you're all men. You're all men, and together, you have done very little to address the crime problem that is plaguing the African-American community. And something needs to be done about it. And the 80 million dollar police building is not going to do it. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Victoria. Let me, I didn't, I know you directed a question to the city attorney, but the Ball Stadium was not built with a referendum. There was a referendum when I was chairman of the Board of County Commissioners to build a Ball Stadium, and it failed. But fortunately, the City Council, which I was not a part of, chose to build a Ball Stadium, and they built it without a referendum. So I just wanted to state for the record, that wasn't, that wasn't used. And so the Council has the authority to build the police station without a referendum. Yeah, so we have that authority to do that. Now, the cost is a different issue, but we have authority to do that. And since you directed some of your remarks relative to the violence in this community, to me specifically, along with a couple others, let me say, every day, doesn't a day go by that I don't think about how we deal with this issue? If somebody has a solution, I'm open to it. I'm open to it. And you should know, and I guess the public should know, just for the record, and I know it just doesn't mean a thing if you're a victim of crime. I understand that. I understand that. But I can tell you that since 2001, since I've been mayor, if we look at the crime index for violent crime, for 100,000 people, and this city is now 251,000 people, it is lower than it was in 2001. That's true for violent crime index, and it's true for property crime index. Now, again, that doesn't take away from the fact that we still have violent crime going. But the point is that violent crime for 100,000 people since 2001 is down in terms of the year 2014. Where we're going to be in 2015, I don't know. But I look at this every day. It's on my calendar when I meet with the manager every week. And if a person has a solution or solutions, I'm open to them, including you. I said including you, but we're not going to do it here, we're not going to do it here, including you. The next person to speak on this item is Minister Rafi Sahidi.
Good evening, Mayor. Mr. Bonfield and Ms. Tretor, we are, I'm well familiar with you. You and I have sat down many days to discuss this issue. First, I wanted to say, I wanted to take a hint, because that's what it really is, from the Herald Sun, September the sixth. According to the Deputy City Manager Bo Ferguson, he told the Herald Sun last week, "The plans presented to Council back in August were run against what Ferguson called a pro-con matrix." I want to stop right there. Now, I've seen the movie The Matrix. I know there was a blue pill and a red pill. I don't want the city to take the responsibility of almost 100 million dollars, the way things seem to be going, and later on take a pill and have to bite on that pill which will be a bitter taste to our community. 20 million dollars, more than the original, have already been projected for this project. Yet, there have been no complete environmental impact study. I still call for that. I call for that because I'm calling out of the divine. There is something about that area that bothers me, divine there. And I believe, once you've put this money in that area, God will show you what I'm trying to get over to you. I'm going to leave that one as that. Our educational system in Durham, along with the county government, is bankrupt to our children. Yet, we can find 80 million dollars to put in a building, but we cannot seem to find on a moral status money to put in our youth. Something is wrong with that picture, that the students have to beg for money in this prosperous city. Affordable housing accommodation is needed. Poor blacks, whites, and browns are almost out of doors in Durham. A public housing just came before you and begged for 500,000 dollars to re-burge their building so that we would have a place to live. But we keep on talking about a police station. In light of something that Sister just said, why we can't put that money in an area where it's needed at now? Our young black men are coming out of jail. One hour out of jail Saturday morning. Brother Levante Biggs committed suicide. Wow! He had no mental health treatment in jail. A man come out of jail one hour on the street, 702 Andrew Avenue, calls his mother and shoots himself, but we have no professional, listen now, professional people in the police arena to handle these people. I'm sick of this. I'm tired of this, that my young brothers and sisters got to die because you don't have the proper healthcare. Train professional people. They got to run in with guns. And I'm saying this, and I take responsibility. The law of reciprocity is getting ready to come down on Durham. The law of reciprocity.
Thank you. Next is Ellen Cassely.
Thank you very much. First of all, I wanted to thank the Council for asking Durham Area Designers to weigh in on these schemes. Just as a side note, Durham Area Designers is made up of architects, landscape architects, urban planners, and realtors, and maybe a few other folks as well. So the reason why I say that is, we really look at problems from all angles. And I think, as it was presented, it sounded like we were trying to maximize the commercial aspects of the site. And that, in fact, was not our, we had two main goals, and that was police safety and good urban planning. And in reference to having the building address Main Street, schemes two, three, and, excuse me, two, four, and five all try to do that. And, and I commend the, the design team because they've done a good job, but they can only do as they're directed. And there are issues with safety of the police officers that were brought up during these discussions. And when, when the topic was brought up of having Main Street be lively and active, the police officers were quick to say, yes, but. And, and it's that yes, but that concerns me. And I think we have an example of that with the substation number five on Rigsby, where it's neither an open building nor, because the police were very much against having those windows. And so we end up with a building that really doesn't do either. And, and so really, police safety and good urban planning was really our main concern. And I do think, as far as addressing Main Street, because the Carpenter Building is about 30 feet tall, and the new police station, I'm assuming, will be about 60 feet tall, not exactly sure on that measurement, the fact that there is a parking lot presently to the west, and the fact that Elizabeth Street is such a skewed angle, it actually will still have a presence on Main Street. And of course, eventually, there will be a building that will be built on that parking lot, I'm assuming, sometime in the near future. And if that building needs to step back ever so slightly so that we can maintain a view from Main Street, these are really talented designers, and I know that you're up for that job. So I, I don't know if the FEMA standards were handed out to you. It's a whole list of, of requirements that need to be adhered to, and having a, a nice, open, welcome space along Main Street is not, does not work well with the security of the police officers. Thank you.
Wendy Hills.
Hi, my name is Wendy Hillis, and I'm the Executive Director of Preservation Durham. I'm here to talk about historic importance and ask, answer the Mayor Protem's questions. First of all, I do want to say that we partnered with Durham Area Designers on the revised, the alternate scheme that was presented to you. And while Ellen just focused on the Main Street presence and the idea of activation on Main Street, I want to follow that up with some discussion of the historic importance of the building. So to specifically answer your question, to my knowledge, that building does not have any association with civil rights history. I mean, I'm sure something happens there, but that's not, that's not the main story associated with that building. And I would disagree that the building does not have any architectural merit. While the building is not currently listed in any historic registry, I would say that's more of an oversight. Duke University is not listed on any historic registry. And I think we can all agree that Duke University is historic and has some great buildings. I have had preliminary conversations with the State Historic Preservation Office about listing this property in the National Register of Historic Places. It looks like the way we would do that would be a thematic nomination of the early 20th century car dealerships on Main Street, of which there are several. And in fact, the County Housing Authority, I believe, is in one. As you go down the street, Fishmongers is an old car dealership, the old Studebaker Building, which is now Respite. There's a whole series of them that date to the early part of the 20th century, and they were really integral to the tobacco history in town. People came and sold their tobacco at auction, and then were flushed with money, and all went to Main Street to buy their new shoes and buy their new cars. So there's this story that can be woven in. I think there is some architectural merit to the building. I can name dozens of buildings in Durham of similar age and architectural merit that have been successfully rehabbed and continue to add to Durham's character. Fishmongers, the old Studebaker showroom on Duke Street, the old Social Services Building at 300 East Main, the old Book Exchange Building, the Five Points Building, where the Cupcake Bar currently is, Mateo. Indeed, most of the buildings on Main Street are of this era, brick buildings, two to three stories. The other thing I want to address is the idea that this would be an additional 3.9 million dollar add to the project. I would encourage you to think about that from a private development standpoint. And if this parcel was sold off and led to a private developer, that developer could take advantage of preservation tax credits, 20% federal credits at this point, and an alternative building code. Indeed, with a budget that's 18 million dollars over at this point, how can you not maximize your return on what you have available to you? My quick calculations are that with the three things we have located in red on the plan that was given to you, the three sites, at 26 dollars a square foot, which is what you all paid for that site, that's 1.4 million dollars. Add to that the demolition costs for the Carpenter Building and not having to abate the Carpenter Building, and I think there's a potential savings. Thank you.
Next is Dave Arneson.
Good evening. Thank you for soliciting public opinion on this important issue. I'm just here to endorse the Durham Area Designer Scheme. I think Ellen and Wendy have spoken eloquently about it. I'd like to read a couple things from the Unified Development Ordinance that I think are relevant here. In purpose and intent, it says, protect existing neighborhoods, prevent their decline, and promoting their livability. Also mentions conserving the value of buildings, examining the most important, most appropriate use of the land, and to protect historic sites and areas. This site's in the downtown design support one district. And when you get to the definition for that district, it says, this district is established to encourage intense development and pedestrian activity through regulations appropriate to the downtown area. The standards encourage vital downtown economy that enhances Durham's position as a commercial, cultural, and entertainment hub of the region while increasing livability. The DDI is intended to work in tandem with the Downtown Durham Master Plan and updates. And in the master plan for downtown, of course, you'll find all kinds of similar language about walkable, livable, mixed-use, vibrant, active streets. And I think the scheme presented by Durham Area Designers accomplishes all of this in a way that's superior to any of the five schemes that had been presented previously. Putting the Police Department on Main Street, I would offer, is probably the lowest priority of any of the criteria that are in that matrix. There's all kinds of very critical, important security concerns and programmatic requirements, square footages, parking, all that kind of thing. But why is it important that the Police Department be on Main Street? What function does that achieve, or how does that benefit the community, or the Police Department for that matter? We've heard about the security concerns that are actually in conflict with the idea of putting the Police Department on Main Street. Private development on Main Street would satisfy the goals of the UDO and the Downtown Master Plan better than a large civic building with a single- better than a large civic building with a single, highly secure, and appropriately so, public entrance. I'd also say that not only can the Durham Area Designer Scheme save the city some money by selling off these parcels of land, clearly, we're not asking the city to spend the 3.9 to incorporate Carpenter into the Police Department, but you also don't spend the money of demolishing that building. You generate some revenue by selling the property, as well as the other two parcels indicated in the scheme. But there would be ongoing tax revenue generated by these private developments. So, that would be a benefit that would pay long-term dividends to the city. Thank you very much.
Welcome, Leslie Frost.
Good evening, Mayor and members of the City Council. I intended to get here early and write down an outline of what I was going to say, but as I was getting ready to leave my house, there were two quick pops that sounded like firecrackers. And as I got on my bike, I saw that everybody was out on my street. And so, I went around the block, and everybody was out on the streets and the blocks. And there was a man lying at the end of my street who has been shot. And EMS truck came out very quickly, but it didn't leave, and I saw them doing CPR. And it brought home to me very viscerally how important the Police Department is to our community. But it doesn't change the reason why I came to speak here tonight, which was to ask the City Council to reopen the site selection process and choose a better site for the Police Department, our police officers, and to open up Main Street for the kind of development that will connect East Durham to the downtown and the economic engine of the downtown, and that will save the historic buildings that create the fabric of our city. I'm sorry, I intended to be a little bit more eloquent, but I'm very shaken by what I saw. And I'm particularly shaken by like the two-year-old kids that were out on the street watching what I think was a man dying. So, thank you.
Thank you. Are there other persons that want to speak on this item? If you could come up and just state your name and address, and you get the yellow card after you've spoken, if you don't mind.
Good evening. I'm John Martin. I live at 401 East Trinity Avenue. And I've lived in Durham for almost half a century, even longer than Steve Shul. So, I have seen Durham, unfortunately, continue to make the same mistakes over and over again. I mean, I've seen some good, very good things, but I've seen some of the same mistakes. When the mayor pro tem said, "Why did we tear those buildings down a mile and a half away?" I couldn't agree more. When I came here, the Baltimore Hotel was still there. The Regal Theater was still there. The Donut Shop was, was still, still there. The Washington Duke Hotel, of course, was, was still here. We keep tearing down buildings, and then a few years later, we say, "Oops, why, why did we do that?" And I'm afraid we're about to do that again. And I, and I don't get it. Please delay this process a little bit longer. Look into the proposal that the Durham Area Designers has come up with. They're serious people. It's not somebody coming up, like me, who's not a designer, not an architect, coming up and saying on the back of the envelope, "I think you can do this." Let them look at it. Let, let the city staff look at it. Look at the kind of possible cost benefits that we can get. And then consider the fact that we also want to make East Main Street more conducive to pedestrians. I'm probably the only person here who has walked after midnight from downtown back to up East Main Street by myself. That's when I lived in Golden Belt. And it's not, once you cross Roxborough Street, you know, it's a little bit scary. We can put some more businesses there, some private businesses that are open. We can make that part of Main Street thrive again. And it won't look like, unfortunately, what the former Hayti now looks like, where we've got the empty Rick Hendrick's Chevrolet parking lot where the Baltimore Hotel used to be. Thank you.
Next. John, could, could you sign a card, please, so we can have a photo of it?
Marcus Jackson, Trademark Properties. I have the good fortune of representing a number of property owners along Ramsar Street. I also represented the Carpenters in the sale of the police headquarters land to the city. And also fortunate to represent the investor group that just acquired the Hendrick Chevrolet dealership and plan to turn it into a three to $400 million new development for the city. I'm here to talk about walkability, pedestrian orientation, enhancing an area that clearly can be a new source for our eclectic, funky businesses to relocate. That is what drives our city, diversity, eclectic. They're getting driven out of, in some cases, getting driven out of the core of the center city by rents and newer development. A lot of the property along Ramsar Street is already starting to transition to those eclectic and funky locations that I believe drive Durham. Tony Source Brewing is getting ready to open in a couple of weeks. I would encourage you to walk into that brewery. They have sunk a serious investment in that facility. It opens in two weeks directly across from the police headquarters. I have the Bud Piper Roofing Facility under contract to a developer that plans to renovate and redevelop that facility. They're not planning to tear it down. They're planning to renovate it and turn it into what you and what I think the city desires. And, and so with that in mind, I, I do believe the city and its architecture team has accounted for a pedestrian orientation. But I wanted to make sure it's enhanced, that we talk about East Main Street, that is important. But Ramsar Street is a huge opportunity. Keep in mind what I just said about all of the eclectic businesses that are likely to locate there, and have already started to locate there. No one has mentioned that the Dillard LRT Station is also directly across from Ramsar. And so Ramsar Street is going to become very important. I want to make sure that the sidewalk system around the county parking lot is continued around the police headquarters and the, and the tree planting. Also, in a number of the designs, there is private development on Ramsar Street. But I want to encourage the city not to make the same mistake that a lot of cities make when they build a parking deck. They plan private development against it. The private development does not come for years. So, the side of the parking deck is this horrible, barren-looking parking deck. And it's going to inhibit what you want to happen on Ramsar Street. And I've heard no one mention that. I'm not trying to add to the budget, but I think that's important, and I thank you for listening.
Thank you. Are, are you going to speak?
Hi, my name is Tim Walter, and I think I'm one of the funky little businesses that Marcus just mentioned. So, I'm with the Reforming, Revitalizing Durham Fruit and Produce Company, which will hopefully be an art center at the corner of Dillard and Ramsar Street. So, I'm kitty-corner across the street from the police station site. And one of the things that I'm really sensitive to is, yes, helping to connect east and west Durham. And one of the things that we're not looking a whole lot at because it's not in the program that the designers were given. But if we think about it, our municipal governments will have built roughly 900 spaces of restricted parking in those blocks. And no, added nothing to public parking in the area. So, as you're looking to enliven those blocks of Main Street and helping to get people to walk from east Durham back into Main Street, back down towards the center part of town, if you park your car at the police station or in the county health department lot and you go to your business there, you have to leave. You have to move. You're not allowed to keep your car parked there. So, it's, it doesn't really add much to the street life. So, I think where these private developments, our municipal buildings, where they're private developments, we would have looked to the, to the developers to collaboratively address a parking solution and enliven the space that's there. So, I just want you to be aware of, it feels like you're building a lot of parking and feels like you're generating a lot of pedestrian traffic and people that may park there, but they really are very limited in their usability and in the, the street life that will take place in that area. So, something to be aware of. Thank you.
You're welcome. Is there anyone else that wants to speak or comment on this item? Now, this is not a public hearing, but it's an opportunity for people to speak if you have comments or questions. And I, I, just, just a minute, Ms. Pease, and you've spoken, no, you've spoken. Is there anyone else that has not had an opportunity to speak that wants to speak on this item? We're not taking, we're not taking follow-up questions, Ms. Pease, if you would expect, you know, respect. We respect the chair. We're not taking follow-up questions. I say a lot, I say, Ms. Pease, I'm, I'm not going to debate that. I'm not going to debate that. I'm not, I'm not going to debate that. Okay. Well, I'm telling you, I'm not, I'm not going to, I'm not going to discuss it. I, I, I'm going to come back to the council. The question of what we build, where we build, is what the council has to decide. I'd agree that $80 million is an issue, and that's what we're going to talk about. So, having said that, I'm going to ask other questions by members of the council, recognize Councilman Moffett, and then.
So, I, I have a couple of questions to start with. I wanted to ask, Ms. Hillis, if you can back up. I'm, I'm miss. I, I missed the, the, you, you made a statement right at the end of your presentation on revenues of the city.
My math. My math at the end?
Yes, if you would just repeat that for me.
Sure. If you look at the three red areas that we have located on that plan, there's one of 35,000 square feet on Ramsar, 15,000 square feet, which is the triangle on Main Street, and 5,840 square feet, which is the, the footprint of Carpenter. At $26 a square foot, which is what you all paid for that land, that's $1.4 million. Plus, not having to pay to demolish Carpenter or do the hazardous material abatement on Carpenter.
See, are you saying you think the value of the Carpenter Building is the land?
Well, I actually think the value of the Carpenter Building is more than that. If you look down the block, 300 East Main Street, the old Social Services Building, Eligibility Building, that sold in April 2014 for $1.8 million. It was a building that had been renovated on the first floor. The second and third floor were in far worse condition, completely unoccupiable than this existing building. It's a slightly larger footprint. But using that square foot number, I came up with a value of about $800,000 for the Carpenter Building alone.
Okay, thank you. And then I have a question for Mr. Jackson. Then while you're coming up, I'll say, Mr. Jackson, you were saying that you've done quite a bit of work in the area. And I just want to ask your opinion of the viability of selling the Carpenter Building as is. You know, is it saleable, and would somebody buy it? And if so, in, in your professional opinion, knowing only what you know at the moment?
Yes, yes, they would. There is a serious momentum and an investor appetite for urban real estate. And there's rapidly rising interest in city of Durham real estate. All you need to do is look at land prices, where they're going. You may recall Northwood Raven acquiring the former Chrysler dealership for $11,700,000 on 6.2 acres without site plan approval. And, and you all probably have seen the number, the dramatic number of building trades in the last couple of years. It's just a huge amount of interest in the city of Durham, and you all deserve some of that credit. You've built a, a great vibe. You've got great momentum. So, yes, it is saleable.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Recognize Councilwoman Cotati.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to say that actually, I started this process preferring building on the current police headquarters site, but that is water under the bridge. So, given that regarding development on the Main Street site, I have a few questions and maybe comments for staff. In no particular order, one of the recommendations, well, so DDI liked schematic four, and Dad likes the hybrid of five plus one. But just looking at the schematics for four and five alone, can you talk a little bit about the differences? Really, it's just, it looked like building massing to me, but I couldn't quite tell, so I wanted to hear what you had to say.
Good evening. Jeffrey Bottomy with O'Brien Atkins. The differences between scheme four and scheme five is the amount of building located on Hood Street in scheme four. So, there's a significant amount of that building facade on Hood Street. And, yeah, that, those are the differences.
Okay, that's the main thing. Thanks.
Yes, ma'am.
Oh, thanks. We're trying to keep multiple things open up here at the same time. Let's see. Can staff comment about sidewalks around the facility? That was raised by one of the, thanks.
I think it'd be best to address that to the design team.
Okay. The comment was made was whether sidewalks would be required around the perimeter of the site.
We would provide sidewalks around the perimeter of the site, correct?
That's what I thought. Okay, and a comment was also made about surface parking. And, and I believe the reference was really, the bulk of the parking that I think the gentleman was referring to is really county. Can you remind us how many surface spots there are, not in the garage, in the proposed schematic?
The visitor parking for the headquarters is, I believe, 72 spots.
And that would be public? Is that correct?
That is for the, yes, that's assigned for the headquarters.
And so, evening hours? Evening hours that could be used by other people. It's open access. Is that correct?
That would be up to the, the owner.
Okay, thanks. So, I guess turning now to Carpenter. And Wendy, I do appreciate your numbers. I'm not sure where you got the larger number at, at 5,800 square feet at $26 per square foot. I came up with 151,000, so I don't know what the additional part you were referring to.
She was referring to the other red spaces, I believe, on the site.
No, I've got the 35,000 square foot land along Ramsar. That would be about 910,000. The triangle piece at 15,000 square feet, that would be 390,000. But 58, I used 5,840?
Right, comes out at 151,840.
Right.
For Carpenter only.
Right, I thought I heard a larger number.
I added the three of them together.
No, not on the 1.4, but the second time I heard a higher number. Just checking. Go ahead.
I, I can answer that. That was when she drew a comparable to the sale of the building at the corner of Roxborough and Main. Then she estimated the value of the Carpenter Building at somewhere over $800,000.
Right, as opposed to being raw land.
Got it, thanks. So, I guess this question is more to staff. I know that we used that number roughly of $4 million to renovate the building and incorporated it into our design. But can you remind us what was in that estimate? In other words, if we were not using it and we were selling it, what do we think? And you may not know, but what would it cost a private developer to renovate and use that building? I mean, in other words, the building needs work. Is that correct?
Correct, and our original estimate, the 3.9, was if we were to incorporate some of our programmatic space in the Carpenter Building. The estimate of 4.2 was to return it to a usable core and shell facility, a building. I'm not taking into consideration tax credits or any of the other things that may or may not be in play.
Okay, I think that's helpful. I just, when we're trying to weigh all these things, yes, maybe we could preserve it, and yes, maybe we could keep it for, or sell it for private use. But someone would have to invest to improve the building. So, let's see. The other thing I had, when we were originally talking about, well, some of the schematics with the triangle land or the land along Ramsar, if we were to sell that property, would we anticipate an RFP process or just a flat sale? I don't know if the manager contemplated that.
It would, you know, that has not been determined yet. It would be, you know, consistent with the state law requirements, which could be either, either of those, but to be determined.
I, I think for me, one of the questions was if, and I do support the retention of the land along Ramsar for private development. I still don't know what I want to do along Main, so I'm just putting that out there. But I do have concerns about if we maintain or release the triangle piece and the Carpenter. But I do have concerns about if we maintain or release the triangle piece in the Carpenter building, would we have any control in either case regarding design? I know people want Main Street activated, et cetera, but once it's no longer in our hands, it's private development, and you may not get what you want in that case either, and I just think it's important to put that out there. And so I don't know if staff has any comments on that.
I would just say, Councilmember Cotati, again, you know, that would be something that, you know, would be determined at the time the property was declared surplus and, and solicitations were received. It's possible that we, you know, would, would want to put restrictions or, or require submittals that met certain criteria, whether it be the Carpenter building or the, or the, the property on the triangle. Typically, in, in my experience is, though, the, the more restrictions that you place on those requirements, that's going to impact, you know, the price and the values of what you receive, because it's, you know, putting more costs on the, on the potential development. But again, that all would remain to be seen when, when we got to that point, or if we got to that point.
I appreciate all that, thanks. I'm just trying to whittle away at all, some of the decision points. One other thing, I certainly understand the concerns about the eighty million dollar budget, but that does, essentially, staff is proposing that we reduce that by the nine point six million in accommodations or changes. And it also does not incorporate what I remember as being roughly ten million dollars for the possible resale of the current headquarters site on Chapel Hill Street, as well as Rigsby. Is that correct? So, so there are additional savings. And then lastly, I just wanted to say, to your point, Victoria, regarding hiring officers, our population has increased, and so we're always expanding police staff to accommodate that as well.
Recognize Councilwoman Shul.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Mayor, before, I have some questions about the headquarters, of course, but I did want to just address a couple of the things that were said were by speakers that I, I think just need some sort of response. First, I want to start, is Ms. Frost still here? It's terrible that you had to see that, and what happened in your, in your neighborhood is, is a terrible tragedy, and we don't know the facts, and you don't know them yet either. But I do want to acknowledge what you said and to say that this is, as the mayor said, and he, he does, he says he thinks about this every day, and he works on it every day, and he does, and many of us think about this too. But I did want to acknowledge what you had said and can understand how you feel. I also wanted to say to Mr. Zaidi, the, I also have a lot of concerns about the officer-involved shooting that took place the other night, and I don't know any of the facts other than what was in the newspaper, and there will be a police report on that, and we will hear about it. But I, this is the second time in the last three years that a, a person who was suicidal was killed by our police officers. And I don't want to prejudge that in any way, because I don't know the facts, but I am very interested in what happened, were the, were the appropriate tactics used? Did this, did this man have to die? And I have grave concerns about that, and appreciate you raising it, because this is something we, we need to know. On the police headquarters, so just to put a period on what Diane was saying, we, we throw around the eighty million dollar number, but I think we're down now to maybe seventy-one million dollars or so. Still expensive, but I do think it's, it's right to, to think about what the real number is. The, to our staff, we, we're basing also this price on how, the county, county participation, about three point two million dollars, and so do we have a reasonable confidence level that this will be forthcoming?
Thank you, Councilmember Shul. Yes, we have had conversations with the county. The county has not committed to a specific number. The, the county has repeatedly affirmed that they agree to a percentage participation of the communication center.
Thank you. And the, and then I guess this is probably for O'Brien Atkins. The memo and what Bo said earlier is the, the steering committee believes that the Dad proposal misses an opportunity to have, for the project to have a positive impact on Main Street, and I wondered if you could explain that, that thinking.
We believe that the, when we say it misses an opportunity to have a positive impact on Main Street, we're referring to the opportunity to directly impact Main Street with our project. We don't know what that future potential is, and when you put restrictions, as we mentioned, on that property. So that, that positive impact that we're referring to is the impact that we control.
Do you mean by that, that you'll have a great building, that it will have a great presence on Main Street?
We, we will have a building that everybody in this room is proud of. That is our goal.
I'm proud of the Human Services Building. I had nothing to do with it, but I'm proud of it for our community, but I'm not really proud of the way it faces Main Street. So what, what would you say about that?
I, I can't speak directly to that design. I don't know that, that process, and, and so I'm not going to criticize somebody else's work without all, all the information.
Give it a try.
I, 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 I will just tell you that we will be back, and, and we will share designs of, of our project throughout that process, and you'll have opportunities to have feedback throughout that time.
Okay. But, okay, and so the, the officer safety issue, do you have any comments on that, that vis a vis what Ellen Cassley raised?
Yeah, so, yes, and, and we talked about this with Dad's. Ellen wasn't able to be at that meeting. But part of that is how you situate a building. It's also how you design a building. And so as designers, we are given a, a site on Main Street, and, and so we need to find the appropriate balance between addressing Main Street and making that active, and considering the officer's safety, and, and that not only goes into how we design the facade, whether we do, if we, it's glass, is it bulletproof glass, is it less expensive alternatives to glass that allow for some transparency? There are transparent GSA projects, border buildings, that weren't considered to be buildings that had daylight or views, and there were inexpensive ways found to, to allow that to happen. So as designers, it's our responsibility to give you all the options, and we design appropriately. We, we, you know, we balance those needs.
So, tell me, so can you say to me, what would be the advantages, the important advantages of the building being on Main Street as opposed to, say, behind Carpenter and another commercial building that might be in that triangle in, in the, on that property but behind them? What would be the?
Again, you get that day one impact on Main Street, so you, you get a positive impact on Main Street, day one. I think the other opportunity is that you don't have some of those, again, when we have those private businesses in front of the building, that's not a lot different than having those private businesses in the first floor of the building. There is a little space between them, but not a, a, a great deal of space. And then where we define the property line between those things and the police's ability to, you know, to control their site, just become, it, it just becomes a blurred line. At, at the front of the building.
Yeah, I agree with you that the police's ability to control their site and what's outside is really important. Do you, could you build a, a building we would all be proud of behind those commercial buildings if they were there?
That would be our charge, and yes.
Yeah. Do you think that, just having nothing to do with whether or not you're able to do that, which I'm sure you would as well, would you, do you think that, we talked about activating a street. Do you think that the, having the Carpenter building and the, and something else commercial in that triangle would, would help activate that portion of Main Street? You know, how do you think about that, just as, as an architect?
I, I mean, I can't say that it would, I mean, there's no negative impact on Main Street, obviously. As, as long as that there is demand for that space, it can have a positive impact on Main Street. The, the question is demand for that space.
And then again, I, I know this is probably not your, exactly your area of expertise, but I bet you know a lot about it, which is, if those were commercially avail, if Carpenter was commercially available, what is your sense? Mr. Jackson, I believe, has already said that he thought there would be demand for it, and so did Ms. Hillis, but let's just say she has an axe to grind. I wonder if you would care to comment on, you know, from your knowledge of, of what's happening commercially here, whether or not you thought there would be a demand?
I think O'Brien Atkins has weighed in on what our opinion of the, of Carpenter's.
Okay. And then, which I think would be that it would be very expensive to, it would cost three and a half million dollars to renovate for a police facility and does not have any particular architectural wonderfulness?
Again, we've commented on that, and, and rather than, than change our comment every time, I, I just refer to our past comments.
Okay, I can't remember your past comment, but.
I, I apologize. I'm sure they're part of the record.
I'm sure they are. And then the pro-con matrix was interesting, and let me see if I can get to that. My, my computer's trying to help me here. Here, go, I got it. It came. Thank you anyway, Don, appreciate it. The, this was sent on nine, one, fifteen. Is that the most recent that we have?
The, the matrix that was sent on September first would have only been a recap of the staff's initial attempt to, to rank and populate that matrix based on the alternative scheme presented by Dad's. We, the matrix that ranks all five scene, schemes was sent on August twenty-first.
Yeah, right. Yeah, I'm sorry. I just meant the Dad one in this case. Thank you. I should have said also, I think that I, I wanted to offer my appreciation for the Dad for coming up with this idea. I mean, I had pretty much resolved myself that, and, and I, and I do feel that we should not spend an extra three and a half to four million dollars on Carpenter, and so I had pretty much, I, I feel pretty strongly about that. I, I don't think it's the best use of our money. So this is a way to help us out of that, if, if we think it's a proposal that can work, and I'm appreciative of the creativity that went into it. So for those Dads who are here, thank you. On the pro-con matrix, the, the activating Main Street, and I guess then this is a, a question for staff, I'm thinking, although I don't, not sure if architects were also on the steering committee, but the, do you, the, the activating Main Street, Dad and Preservation Durham put a pro on that, and, and the, the steering committee put a con on that, and I just wondered if you wanted to comment on, on that.
Certainly, I think it, it's a good chance to clarify that item and a number of items on this list. I think we, throughout this matrix, evaluated the pro-con about what we could control when we built this project. So when we talk about activating Main Street, we are specifically referring to what we task our design team to do. And given the fact that the scheme that we were evaluating in this scenario completely removed any city imprint over what happened on Main Street, our analysis was that that, that removed your opportunity through this construction project to have that imprint. We understand what they're implying with a pro, which is that private development may, when it achieves its potential, may provide that, and I, I think we don't necessarily dispute that, but our ability to control it with this project is what we were commenting on.
Great, that's, that's very helpful. Thank you. And then one more question, which is, you had referred to some concern about compressing the site, that the Dad plan would compress the site, and you had some concern about that, and I wondered if you wanted to just talk about that in a little bit more detail.
Sure, and, and I can't get too specific, because I would, I would say that, that that is sort of the unknown, that we reference a little bit of uneasiness about not really having had more time to evaluate the concept. I think, given that the uses get closer together, they did, they were very diligent in maintaining our program, so I want to acknowledge upfront that they used our numbers in building this scheme, and they showed that to us. I think, given the fact that there are, that the Carpenter site has a buffer around it in, in their scenario, and that we haven't fully run that buffer through our security consultant, they did use a similar buffer. So I, I think they've tried very much to respect our program, and I'm not suggesting that we could not make it work. I'm only saying that we provide a level of diligence and review on the other five schemes that we haven't here. And given that this is the least amount of the site dedicated to the police facility and its uses, that is something we would certainly want to vet before moving forward.
And, and if, if that, that vetting would take approximately, how long, just a wild guess?
I'm gonna put our team on the spot and ask them to comment on that.
I'd say about a week. Internally, it would take a week, so we could get it back to you.
Okay. Well, let me just say I'm, I'm very interested in that vetting. I mean, a week is a short period of time, and if it was a little longer, I'd be interested in that too. So I think this has a lot of promise. I can see why we cer, you know, yes, it needs to be vetted more thoroughly, and so I would be very interested in that, and hopefully we could, I, I'd like to support proceeding in that way. Mr. Mayor.
You're welcome. Let, let me share my thoughts on where we are. First of all, I want to say, like Diane, this was not my preferred spot. It wasn't the old police headquarters. It was Fayette, Fayette Street, Fayette Place. That was my preferred. But for whatever, for valid reasons, that, that went out of the picture. I, I think we also need to understand the decision this council has made, and the decision the council has made is that we knew, we need a new police facility. I don't think anyone on, on here questioned that. And so we proceeded along that path. We proceeded along the path that this was the best slot out of the three that were, were proposed, the old police station, Fayette Place, and Fayette, and Main Street. And we proceeded assuming we had a certain budget that we're working with. And the staff has explained pretty thoroughly the charge we gave to the architects, and they pretty much were designing based on the guidelines that we provided. I wasn't at the work session when these alternatives were, were presented. I've had a chance to, to look at them since. And I guess one of the questions, I, first of all, I was not in favor of supporting, saving the old Carpenter site for a very straight. I just couldn't see putting those kind of dollars into that building, especially when, based on what the architects were telling us, is valued. So that, that was not in, in my favor, and it still isn't. One of the questions I wanted to ask is, has, has there been any offers for that facility? I know L Central wants to stay there, but has anybody else offered to buy that building?
No, sir.
Okay, so I, I guess I'm a little, to buy the building before we even start talking about it. The building's been sitting there long before the city decided to use that site for police headquarters. I'm trying to understand, was there any interest in that building? Okay, Marcus. Could you come to the, whoever's going to speak, if you could come to the?
David Arneson, Center Studio Architecture. I've been speaking with a developer who expressed some interest in learning more about the building. They can't make any commitments, of course, but they expressed interest in learning more.
This is recently?
Yeah.
But prior to that, nobody expressed an interest that you were aware of?
Pardon me?
Prior to this gentleman that you spoke to, had anyone else talked to you about purchasing that site, or that building?
No.
Okay. Does anyone else know if someone was interested in that building prior to this discussion we've had? Ms. Frost, you, you're free to, because I'm asking the question, so if you have an answer, feel free to come up.
I think there's a difference between that building and that entire site, and previously it was marketed as that entire site, which is the entire Carpenter Chevrolet. It incorporates, what, three or four buildings? So that building alone has not been marketed, and now that it's owned by the city, I don't know. know that it's in people's radar that it would be available.
Well, I, I would tend to disagree with that. If a developer, somebody had an interest in that building, they would have expressed that interest to the owners, independent of the fact that the city now has it. Just no one has expressed an interest in the building until we came to this point. So, I, I just haven't felt the need, from my perspective, that we should, given where our prices are, to do it. Ms. Frost?
So, I did have a conversation with the developer, who said that he thought that the city had paid too much for the site, but that he had been interested in the site. I mean, he hadn't bought it, obviously, but he was very interested in the Carpenter building. And this came out, and I actually talked with another Realtor. But again, this part of town is, is sort of just, it's, the momentum is going up for this part of town. So, the fact that there hasn't been, you know, interest in the last few years doesn't mean that there's not interest now. And, and the city's purchase of it and the discussion centered on the police headquarters, I think, has raised people's interest about what's there. So, I would, I, I wouldn't say that that would be the question, you know, has there been interest, but rather, would there be interest now? And I think, I think that would get a different answer.
What, what, can the staff tell me, what, what did we pay for that building, roughly? I see you've got demolition costs of about two hundred fifty-six thousand dollars, or four, four, four hundred eighty-nine thousand dollars, or selected, five hundred sixty-one thousand dollars. What, what, what do you think we paid for that building?
For the Carpenter site, it was five point four-nine million. The site.
No, I'm not talking about the entire site. I'm talking about if we carved out the Carpenter piece.
We, we haven't done an analysis of, of that. We can do a basis on what we paid per square foot, but we've not done another analysis of what the market would bear.
Okay. Again, let, let me go back to where, where, where I started. I, I didn't see the, the early models, I've had an opportunity to look at it. I do value the fact that designers have come up with a proposal. For me, I would not be averse to, I guess I'm where Steve is on this, I was there before, before he said it, but I would not be averse to the architects taking a look at that facility as proposed, to come back and give the council their appraisal of what it would take to do that design. Especially when you're telling me it's another week or two weeks to do that, I don't think that's going to make that big of a difference. But at least we will have six models that this council can now look at with numbers to make a decision. And with that, I think nobody can feel that their opinions weren't given, you've been given the opportunity to go through and express your feelings on this particular site, and it'll be back up to the council to make the final decision. I, I can tell you that the only way I support keeping the Carpenter building is that we had a private developer that was coming in and taking off our hands, and we could guarantee that was going to happen. Otherwise, as far as I'm concerned, it could go. That's, that's a cost that I think this project can ill afford, at the dollars that we're at. So, I, I would support where Steve is. We got, to me, it's just another model. So, now we've got six models. We've got a model that doesn't have a cost attached to it. And if the architects feel that they can, sure, Kevin.
Only exception I take is that the other five schemes that you saw were vetted in terms of drawing them out. This is a diagram. We will have to go back and bring it up to that same level, and then go back. So, I, I just, I don't want to make a comparison that they are apples and oranges at this time. We can make them apples and apples, but I don't want you to say that they're the same because they're different at this point in time.
Well, I, I appreciate that, because that's what I was trying to understand. What would it take to take?
It was, it's, the one to two week timeframe would be there. We'd have to get Lynn Leece involved, because there was some cost vetting that would have to be done. We will have to mass out those ideas on that diagram, see if it pushes and pulls anywhere, you know, in terms of the, the square footage and things. So, but I just don't want there to be left that they're both at the same level. A different amount of effort and time went into building those other five.
Well, I guess what I'm asking is, how do we make an apples-to-apples comparison?
We would have to go back. We would have to do the same type of diagrams that we did for the other five schemes. We would have to look at it, we'd have to review it with Lynn Leece, and then come back and tell you what all that effort was.
And obviously, that's an additional cost that
That is correct.
The architects are going, I think we need to factor that into it also?
Yes, it is. It would be an additional, it is not in our original scope of work. That is correct.
Well, again, for, for a project of this importance and size, I think we need to do as much as we can to at least satisfy this council, that we've done a thorough vetting of
And we would love to do that. I'm just trying to be sure that we understand what, we're not comparing the same things at this point in time.
I, I accept that. But again, to me, two weeks for a project that's going to be here at least twenty or thirty years, I don't think it's going to hurt us that much in terms of time, if in fact you can get to the apples-to-apples piece. Are there other comments that we have? Mr. Manager, I'm, I'm sorry, Councilman Davis?
Not about this, but I, I'd like to go back at some point before we leave here tonight. And I don't want to blindside anybody, but this community's had a lot of disturbances over the last little bit of time. And I'd, I'd like to not leave here without hearing from our police department to find out what they are seeing and what kind of discussion we can have about the violence that we've experienced over the last two weeks or so. This may not be appropriate, and if not, so, let me know. But the issue has been raised by some of the speakers, and, and there are issues about past violence, and of course, the violence is down overall, but the issue is, this is on the minds of people here in Durham. If they can give us anything beyond what we've heard tonight, it would be beneficial to me.
Ed, I, I think you have a valid question, and I, I want to hear as much as we can hear without jeopardizing what type, whatever investigation's going on. I, I like to deal with this issue.
Yeah, that's why I said, this is not the appropriate
So, whenever it's appropriate, yes.
All right. So, let, let me try to come back to where we are. Are there any other comments? I recognize Councilman Moffin.
I have a, a few comments. I, I find one of the more challenging issues that we've dealt with, as I'm sure all of us do, you know, we're balancing a need to the men and the women who work for the city of Durham, the impacts on Main Street and all the people who live east and west of the site, and, and the impacts on the community, and of course, the long-term capital spending implications. I will say that cost, you know, you can't just say, oh, it's sixty or it's seventy-one million dollars, because it's related a lot to the program, the uses, and, and what we're doing there. So, in trying to, I'm very concerned about the costs. And one of the things that I'd be interested in hearing a little bit more, I think the staff can do this, I asked them to do this, this morning, and it was not possible, but they've come back and said, in, in the time allowed, they've come back and said that cost per square foot with peers, cities, for the facilities they built, which I thought was interesting. But I, I got to thinking about the cost per resident, for example, how much the different communities, and of course, it depends a lot on what the program is, what are the uses that are going into the facility. But so far, what I've seen, and a little bit that we're able to put together, it, it hasn't set off alarm bells for me. What did set off alarm bells was apparently the first estimates we had were really poor. And we need to make sure that we have good estimates going forward, because we don't want to have continuous surprises. Next thing I want to say is, is that on the question of whether or not we should have a statement building, should, should, is it important that the building have frontage on Main Street in order to be able to have an impact on the street, the building have an impact on the street? From the beginning, I've said, I've been concerned about what this building might, the impacts that it might have on the street. And I know that the designers are excellent, that the firm is great, but I'm concerned about the conflict between what we're calling the need to activate Main Street and safety and security of the people working in the building and the site. We've heard some talk about controlling the site, but we've picked a site that's bounded by four public streets. It's, it's almost as, as open a site as we could possibly go for. So, I, so I'm looking at what, what's the conflicts between those issues and whether or not, in the DAD, the DAD proposal, they've actually pushed the, the building back away from Main Street. And for me, I think about what, what, when we go into a community, when you go into a community and you say, what, what makes this Durham, as opposed to anywhere USA? And part of that is the historical context of what's here. So, I think it's important to really look at the historical context, preserve it where we can, when it's cost-effective. So, when we were looking at spending four million dollars on the Carpenter Chevrolet building, and I was weighing that against our other capital needs, I couldn't get there, but, because of all the trade-offs. But if we could sell it, which I think is something that we should look at, if we can sell the triangle and therefore have uses along Main Street, which actually add to the experience, to give not just something that's handsome, not just something that is landscaped, but something that actually provides uses that people want to walk to, to access, to use, and if we can do that without it costing us four million dollars, then I'm in. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other comments, questions? If not, then I don't know if we had, need to have a motion, or is sufficient? Mr. Manager, do you understand?
There's consensus at the council, that it will take a few weeks and do some additional review and come back at either the twenty-fourth work session of September or the first work session in October.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you. Let's move to the